Order, it looks like we have a quorum at 6:31 PM. And if you would all mute and join me in the pledge of allegiance, you can rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody. So first item on the agenda tonight is citizens comments, and I do not have any that have been registered with the committee. So we're going to move on from that item. As you guys can see, we have a consent agenda that's pretty full. So before we take a motion on the consent agenda, is everybody okay going ahead? With it as is, or is there anything that anybody wants to pull out of the consent agenda and look at individually?
Hold on.
Oh, hi Scott, go right ahead.
No, I'm trying to find my notes on that.
Hey Joe, can I just ask a clarifying question really quick? I'm assuming Joe is here.
I'm I'm here. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi Joe. Um, Joe, if we keep things in the consent agenda and people don't want to necessarily vote against it, they just want to ask a question about an individual item in the consent agenda. We can do that during discussion after the motion, correct?
Yes.
What if after that discussion, somebody wants to pull something out of the consent agenda at that time? Is there a method for that?
Yes, um, any member of the committee can move to object to a particular item being in the consent agenda. The objection does not have to go to a vote. You are compelled under the rules of order to essentially, if any member objects to uh move the consent agenda item back onto the regular agenda.
Awesome. Joe, this is why you get paid the big bucks. We're so grateful that you're here. So everybody, um.
So I don't need to pull the items out of the agenda, but I do have some questions about the grants.
Yeah, so it seems like we can proceed with, um, if Amy Cohen has a motion for the consent agenda, that will allow us to open up discussions. So Amy, do you want to give us the motion?
Yes, I am struggling a little bit because I'm on a different computer. So give me a moment here. I just had them up and they disappeared, but I will move to, um, I will move the consent agenda of September 25th, 2024, as provided in the meeting materials.
I'll second that. Thank you. Uh, so there is some discussion, I can tell. So we'll go with Scott first because he brought up that he has a couple of items that he'd like to question. So go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, so specifically I have questions about the CSHS grant and the ESSA grant. Um, starting with the CSHS grant. Um, so it looks like that's a 10 year grant that renews each year for $75,000 if I'm understanding it correctly. Does the grant amount, and please confirm that first of all. Um, second of all, um, does the amount of the grant go up each year? Cause if not, does the school committee get a need to find additional money each year to pay higher salaries for the people that are hired under that grant?
So Kirk, I'll send that to you or perhaps to Russ.
Uh, thank you. I will, uh, yeah, defer to the team on that. And let's go first to Mr. Mulcay.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so in my understanding, Mr. Powell, this grant has not, doesn't mean it won't in the future increase. Uh, so your point is valid. Um, I would have to do the charting out of the math on your question with regards to the salary. Um, but we obviously, you know, if we got to a year in the future where this would potentially take operational money, we would have that discussion at that point. So in looking at the grant, our best bet is to just decrease our materials and supplies up that come out of this versus, um, continuing at that level and then having to look to the operating budget for the salary portion of it. Um, but your point is a good one and one to watch over time for sure.
So Scott, did that satisfy everything you wanted to know about that grant?
Yes.
Okay. And then you had a secondary question?
Well, does Sharon's question about that grant or something else?
It's about that grant, Sharon. So Sharon, why don't you, Scott's deferring to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Scott. Um, so I was just looking for a little bit more information about that grant. Um, what is the district nurse, resource nurse position? Is that a new position or is it a continuing position?
I can answer that question. Yeah, this is a position that we, that was grant funded, um, I believe during the time of COVID, uh, with Nurse Leader, uh, Gil Becky, when she was here. And so we've continued to main that, maintain that program through the grant funding. This point six nurse is a float nurse throughout the district. So we'll perform the duties of a school nurse. If we need them in the school, we'll help with, uh, hearing and vision screenings, uh, and but also, uh, this particular, uh, position helps with uh, specific plans for people to have very detailed medical plans that have to be, uh, handled out. So, uh, she's, she supports all around the district, but primarily works on specific nursing cases.
That helps Sharon.
Yes, and that's your question. Thank you.
Okay, back over to Scott.
Thank you. Um, so with respect to the ESSA grant, um, it looks like all the additional staff are being allocated to Lancaster. Is there a specific reason for that? Cause I have to believe that, you know, Bolton and Stowe would also have some need for those resources. And, um, how long does this grant last? I mean, similarly, like what happens when it ends to the people that we hire under it?
So Mr. Powell, the ESA grant is otherwise known as Title One. And so the Title One program has specific rules and it's located in Lancaster for a reason. I will turn this over, uh, to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Friend, to describe that grant. Ms. Friend?
Sure, the, the Title One, um, allocation is identified to support Lancaster and it's based on, uh, low income percentages. Um, that, um, make our two schools in Lancaster eligible for Title One. So that's why the, the grant is associated with Lancaster specifically. We did receive an increase. This is, this is an entitlement grant versus a competitive grant. So one, um, that, as the name would, 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 would state, we are entitled to, um, all four elements of the ESA grant are entitlement grants versus a competitive grant like we presented to the committee before, say the Innovation Pathways Grant, which is a competitive grant, one that we apply for and write a narrative to, or our high quality instructional materials grants, which are competitive grants. So this one, the, um, is a federal grant, um, and is provided to us. We do need to write narratives and state the reasons why and how we're going to use that funding, but it is provided to us based on metrics. So for Title One, it's based on socioeconomic, uh, low income percentages. Did that, uh, answer the question?
It answered the question about why it's going to Lancaster, but I did have additional questions with respect to like the durability of that grant.
Sure. So I don't know, uh, Mr. Mulcay, and if you want to speak to the salary portion, I can certainly help with that, with the additional staffing.
Ms. Friend, if I can interrupt for a second?
Certainly.
Mr. Powell, can you, um, just define what you mean by durability?
Right. So does, does that, does that grant renew every year or is it, is it a multi-year grant? And to the extent that it doesn't, if we, if the federal government cut it off at some point, would we adjust our programs accordingly?
So this is a federal entitlement grant, and if any program, if say federal funding were cut off, uh, our program would be eliminated and we would have to pick up the funds locally if that ever happened.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about the consent agenda or anything in it? I'm not seeing any golden hands. All right, everybody. So we are about to take the vote on the consent agenda for September 25th. I'll go to Sharon first.
Yes.
I vote yes, Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Lindsay?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Shondor?
Yes.
And I think I got everyone. It jumped on me. Did I get everyone? All right, guys. Uh, so thank you. Our experiment with the consent agenda, um, feels like a success. So great job, guys. Uh, let's go to the school committee chairperson update. Um, the only thing that I wanted to alert the committee on and Bolton reps, you can correct me if I'm off here. We have a vote happening at the select board meeting. Is it tomorrow night, guys?
It is, yep.
So Amy and Amy are going to appear at the select board to, according to our regional agreement, uh, vote for the third Bolton representative who will be filling Jesse Davis's vacancy. So we have, I think, three interested candidates who have submitted letters of intent. Oh, two interested candidates who have submitted letters of intent. If you're interested in understanding more about that, you can watch the select board meeting tomorrow night. Uh, we hope to have that person sworn in and attending our next school committee meeting. I will also say that, uh, Stowe at this moment in time still has a vacancy. And if any interested, uh, resident would like to, um, inquire about that, they can reach out to the, uh, town hall and speak with our town administrator's office, or they can email me. All right. So, uh, next item here is our favorite part always, our student representative report. And I do see Ava with, it looks like a uniform on and, um, probably multitasking. Uh, so Ava, uh, please, uh, we'd like to welcome you. And it looks like we have a new face as well that you're probably going to introduce as well. So go for it. Do we have her?
Okay, well, Ryan is up first, so.
Hello.
Ryan, hi Ryan. Will you introduce yourself to all of us? Because you are new. Go for it.
Yep, I, I'm Ryan Metro. Uh, I'm, I'm from Stowe and, um, excited to be here. So.
Everybody can do like a virtual wave. Welcome, bud. We're excited to have you here.
Thank you. All right. So this week, this, uh, year's homecoming dance is coming up on October 26th. That'll be from 6:30 to 9:00. Um, until then, during lunch, we're going to have a different group of people, um, selling tickets during lunch, which, um, so we have like a whole schedule set up for that and each block will be taken care of. Um, we had an activity fair last week where different clubs, um, sat in the courtyard during lunch and they kind of advertise and show, and put on display what they're all about. And, um, that was a big success. Uh, I know I did and saw others signing up for new clubs and I thought that was neat. Um, we had our first Nishoba news of the school year going out and they're incorporating a new segment called the campus update and they're going to kind of track the construction process and any of the news about the new school. And then Ava's going to talk a little bit about the sports.
So our fall sports teams are doing really well as we head into the second half of the regular season. And we're still waiting for the power rankings to come out to see where our teams fall in the state. The football team had a huge win 17 to 14 on Friday night by kicking a field goal with under two minutes in the game. And our fan section has been really great. It's been really positive, supportive, and there's been a lot more spirit. So that's all we have.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could make a comment here?
Yeah, please do.
And if, if Ryan and Ava can share this with the students, uh, we received an email this week from the parent of the visiting team. And this parent wanted to express how amazing she thought our student fan base was, how polite they were, how respectful and boisterous they were regarding the game, and really thought our student body was an example, student body. So I, I share that with you all, uh, to say that somebody outside of our community recognized that about our student body when they came to see the game last week. So kudos to you and all your classmates.
That's really awesome.
Yeah. Do you think how like letting the Shoba news or something like that, just to like kind of congratulate, uh, uh, that's going more universally would be a good, a good idea?
Yeah, I think that's great, Ryan. That's great. The second thing, Ryan, for you and Ava to know is that I believe it's in, in two weeks, I have a, a planning session coming up with Dr. Boyton uh, regarding, uh, the advisory group we're going to, uh, start this year. And so we're going to look to the two of you to help us in, um, you know, uh, seeking out folks that are going to be on that advisory team. So be looking out for that. Dr. Boyton and I will be planning that in two weeks and we'll be reaching out to you afterwards.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I wonder if any member of the committee has any questions or comments like to add? All right, I'm not seeing any. So Ava and Ryan, uh, thanks so much for being here. As always, we appreciate it. In a couple of weeks, we'll get to see you in person. Uh, but welcome, Ryan and Ava. Thanks again for, uh, helping him get on board.
Thank you.
Of course. Have a great night, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, guys. All right, everybody. So we're going to move on now to the superintendent's report and I'll turn it over to Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Um, have several updates for you tonight. Uh, we are reaching that time where we've settled in at the start of the year. So I wanted to give you a, a hiring update of where we are currently. Very excited to report, we started the school year with 100% of our unit A positions filled. A couple of them at the very last moment. So we worked together with superintendents, uh, and in the other school systems to transition those people. But now they are in their officially in their seats and, uh, we're rolling. And as the committee knows, we've struggled particularly in the area of, of hiring some special education teachers, uh, in the past, but, uh, we're, we're fully staffed and rolling along. Uh, we still have a few open IA positions that our principals are hiring for, and that's currently happening now. Uh, we also, uh, have hired some are looking to finish to round out the lunchroom monitors. Uh, what I want to share with the committee that is a great benefit here is as we look at our finances through food services, these are positions that are supported through the food services, um, budget, and they are able to, uh, supervise and monitor the lunchroom practices. The way that is impacting learning in the classroom is it's freeing up teachers and instructional assistants so that they can be servicing students as opposed to doing duty coverages in the cafeteria. So this is a great investment and it's also supported through the food service budget. So it does not impact the operational budget. Um, we are adding a kitchen manager to Hale as part of, uh, the redesign of our food services program. Um, and our substitute pool is growing with applicants. Um, and they've shared that the accelerator rate that this committee passed last year is an enticing incentive to them. I was, uh, speaking today with Ms. Hannigan and she is, uh, ordering some, some signs that you're going to see posted on 117 on school properties, uh, advertising and looking for more, more substitutes to come into our district. Um, I bring those up because, uh, we've had those discussions, uh, the past couple of years in our meetings. Um, and connected to that, and I'll pause after this part, um, is, uh, some net mutual staffing adjustments we made, uh, this summer. Uh, part of it was, uh, due to, uh, well, a good deal of it is due to how we are lining our schedules together and found some efficiencies. So at Florence Sawyer School, the health position decreased to 10th, but we needed to increase the art to 10th. Um, Center School, there are no changes. Uh, at Hale Middle School, uh, we needed, uh, our, our health teacher, um, and art teacher both, uh, moved on to positions in other districts. And so we hired them at the rates, uh, at the percentages. We need them in this master design. That was a net, uh, savings of a 1.0 as we needed a point six health teacher at Hale and a point four art to execute the, uh, our, our educational plan. At Mary Rollinson, uh, the net is a, is a zero net. However, I use this as a reminder of the committee. We added a position back into the budget before we had the budget hearings specifically for Luther Burbank because we were wondering, uh, excuse me, specifically about Mary Rollinson, uh, because of the mystery of kindergarten numbers, but also we saw our fourth and fifth grade numbers were hovering close to that threshold. Well, indeed, they're, they're right on that threshold and have crossed over it. And so we are actually hiring with that 1.0 FTE, a fourth and fifth grade academic support teacher that will support both grades in the core subject matter areas. And, um, so this is not an additional position. It was activating the position that we were holding in advance. And it will slide into, uh, be a fourth grade position in the FY 26 budget as part of our baseline staff. Uh, there were no changes at Luther Burbank. Uh, in the Shoba Regional High School, we did increase Spanish by, uh, point two as we saw uh, students come in and they're, they elect, that elected to take Spanish. Uh, we were able to do that, uh, through some library IA staffing. And then in special education, we increased, uh, the psychologist, um, uh, staffing at the high school by point two. So rather than three days a week, we have now four days a week of a school psychologist at, uh, our high school. And the last, uh, uh, special education piece is looking, uh, doing a needs assessment around the district of where our staffing needs to go. We elected to combine the point five special education staffing at Luther Burbank with the point five staffing uh, at center into a 1.0 position specifically at the center school. Um, and so I'm going to pause there on the update, uh, with staffing, uh, and see if there's any questions from the committee on just those two elements.
Any questions, anybody? I think that was perhaps very clear. No questions, Kirk. Go ahead.
Very good, very good. Uh, we will remind you of these when we get to the budget workshop as well. Uh, as we are going to be hearing from our principals tonight regarding their requests for, uh, the Washington DC experience, and we know that we got aligned on the Washington DC experience last year. Uh, so that was good. And our next, um, uh, area to tackle was nature's classroom. And we have, uh, worked collectively as, as a leadership team and have decided that fifth grade is going to be the place where we focus our nature's classroom experience in the Shoba Regional School District. We see that as if you will, sort of a landmark time for our fifth graders that would be rising in the middle school. And many ways, the DC trip is the, uh, seminal moment for the eighth graders as they rise up to the high school. Um, and so, uh, right now, uh, for this particular school year, we will continue as planned, knowing that beginning in the fall of 25, we will all be aligned, aiming for our first combined trip to be in the fall of 2025. And, uh, we are currently looking for, um, high quality educational experiences that can take, um, you know, the approximate 200 students that would be going. Uh, so we'll be shopping for that and we'll be coming back to the committee later in this year for approval of that trip. Uh, once our team is able to, to make those decisions. Um, and I will pause there one more time before I turn it over for a special recognition.
Any questions about nature's classroom? I think Amy Cohen perhaps?
Yeah, thank you. I'm still having difficulty navigating my two screens here. Um, so I think that sounds like a great um, plan that you put in place for this nature's classroom to be, to take all three schools and have them doing them at the same time. And fifth grade seems like a great time to do it too. But what just occurred to me is that, um, what happens to the kids who are in sixth grade this year?
Well, we have to make some decisions and make that, uh, we don't have a, a trip planned for the current sixth graders this year. Um, and that is specific to, I believe, um, um, the students at the Florence Sawyer School, if I'm correct. And so, um, Mr. Bates, has there been any conversations about that at Florence Sawyer?
We, we haven't had those conversations yet, Superintendent Downing, no.
So what we know right now, Ms. Cohen, is that we have, uh, established this, but we'll take that conversation back to the team. Uh, certainly because we don't want our students to miss out on that great opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I happen to be the parent of a sixth grader who might just fall into this category of missing this as a result of these changes.
I will say that the point of the alignment i- is, um, so that we're all experiencing that, um, the, the opportunity to go to outdoor classroom, uh, but, but in the past couple of years, we've had to bring them on site. It, because it just wasn't viable, uh, to travel away.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's go over. I think Jackie might have been next. No?
Oh, Sharon.
Oh, okay. Oh, Sharon, sorry, Sharon. Go ahead.
I'm just curious, um, if you can tell me a little bit more about it, it sounds like you're looking for a single location where all the groups would go together. And so you're looking for a nature's classroom campus that can accommodate all of those kids at the same time? Or is it not, is it something different than the nature's classroom that we've, that we've done before?
Yeah, Ms. Park, there, there are many places that do this. And so as we've talked about it and talked about building that K to, uh, 12 Nishoba identity, we would like to be aligned there. It may very well be the location that, that the Lancaster students currently go to, but it may not. It, it, the priority for us is to get a highly enriching educational experience. And if we can do that together as a system, that's our priority. As we've explained about the Washington DC trip in the past, there's so many complexities involved with that regarding the size of groups that it makes it very difficult, which is why we don't, um, do that for our schools with Washington DC. Uh, but because it's closer to us, the proximity, the familiarity we have with those programs, we're hoping we can find that.
All right, uh, over to Jackie.
I, I think you did a really excellent job, Superintendent, uh, answering kind of like what my, I guess my concern is, knowing that we've had a longstanding tradition of going away. Um, so I hope that the district is able to really identify a place where kids are still able to go and experience a new exciting and very dirty and smelly.
Dr. Reiner, thank you for that. And as we were discussing this as a team, we did discuss the option of bringing it in. And our leaders felt it was, uh, such a valuable experience for the kids to have the time away that that is our priority. Uh, all our principals are unanimous in that.
Uh, over to Lindsay.
Yes, it's just a clarifying question. Um, can someone give me an example of, for example, what Lancaster is doing or currently planning, just so I can use some additional research on kind of what nature's classroom is and what that entails?
Uh, and do we have Mr. Blanchard with us at the moment? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bates because Mr. Bates is very familiar with that.
Sure. So the nature's classroom experience, a- and I should say that very recently, nature's classroom has been rebranded as outdoor classroom. Uh, there are multiple sites, uh, around the New England region. The only site that is still considered nature's classroom is, is in Charlton and it's, it's much too small to accommodate.
Yeah.
Uh, really even in one of our, uh, larger fifth grades, much less, uh, all three. The goal is, as we continue to build our Nishoba identity pre-K through 12 is, is as Superintendent Downing said, to bring all of the fifth graders together in the, the final year of their elementary experience. If, if, if we can, and there are, um, a limited, there are a lot of sites, but a limited number of sites that would be able to handle um, uh, all three, uh, fifth grade, uh, school, schools, fifth grades at once. Uh, but, um, uh, Mr. Blanchard and Ms. Adalek and I are, um, talking with them and, and trying to work that out currently. Talking with them and, and trying to work that out. Currently Lancaster uh goes to. Um, a site in Maine. Uh, Sean O'Shea is here, I think. Um. I'm, I'm not sure where the location is. It's about an hour and a half away. And I think that that's been the site that they've gone to for quite some time.
Interesting. Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for the background. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Oh, go ahead, Sharon.
The, the nature's classroom site that Rollinson has gone to is in um. Uh, Orchard Park, Maine. It's the great.
Yes.
About a mile from Old Orchard Beach.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just for a little bit of context too, I want to say how much I appreciate you all bringing some. Parody here across the three towns because. The kids of Stowe, I don't think have ever done this and um, you know, bravo to the leaders in Stowe especially for stepping up and. Taking that on because it's a really big uh undertaking. And I really appreciate that. So uh, even though my kids are sixth grade and above. And will never experience it. I'm really happy that all of the younger kids will.
Madam Chair, um, just for clarity that, that the experience for the Stowe kids have been the in-school experience. They haven't had the overnight experience. And so that's where we had a lot discussed around the value of the overnight experience.
Yeah. Amy, another question?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for um. Other school committee members who may not be aware that this tradition of Florence Sawyer. Has happened at seventh grade. Sounds like I didn't realize it was happening at different. Grades at the other schools. And so that's why I was asking about the sixth graders at Florence Sawyer now, because I think that this is an experience that they. Um, as they're rising up, especially through a K through eight school, they really look forward to. This being a seventh grade milestone. And so I would just hope that um. If this plan goes forward, that there is some thought given to what. Will replace that for the current sixth graders. Because to them, it does feel like they're missing something, but to everybody else, it's going to feel like they're gaining something. So.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, everybody. So let's move on to the next item in uh the superintendent's report, and that's updates on strategic work.
Yeah, and I'm actually going to bring Mr. Bates to the forefront again to um. Celebrate uh one of our outstanding educators, Ms. Theatoli. So, Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. I um, ladies and gentlemen, could not be more proud as a principal to. Announce to you that our eighth grade social studies teacher, Theatoli, has been named the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five middle level. Social Studies Teacher of the Year by the National Council for Social Studies. This is an award that is uh. Indeed, a testament to um Mrs. Tully's long commitment to um. To social studies, to education, to our school district. And to an interactive and innovative approach to learning about civics and history and social studies. Uh, she will be recognized in uh, at the N C S S Annual Conference, which happens to be in Boston this year in uh, in late November.
Congratulations, Steph.
Very much. Thank you.
What an amazing honor. Uh, and we are so proud. This is a huge accomplishment. So congratulations. Would you like to say anything to the committee or to the communities?
Um, just thank you for all your support and uh a shout out to Laura Pagington. Um, who put a bug in my ear. So I just say thanks to everybody. Everything's been wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for all that you do for our kids. Appreciate it. Wonderful. All right. So Kirk, you can just keep it, keep it rolling.
Yeah, we'll move into our updates on strategic work and I'll first give it to um Finance and Operations Director Ross Mulcain.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Thanks to the committee. Uh, I have a brief item today, but it's an important item. So we've begun our work on the F Y twenty six budget. And our first step is to determine and publish the timeline for the budget season ahead. Uh, you'll see the F Y twenty six budget timeline for your review and the meeting materials. This is already presented for review and feedback at the September Budget and Warrant Subcommittee Meeting. Uh, the timeline includes the key benchmarks in preparing the proposed budget. For the January fifteenth budget workshop and the subsequent review and approval process that culminates at the town meetings in the spring. Uh, we've added a short message uh at the top of the timeline to direct the public to the Finance and Operations Center, which you've all seen. Um, and certainly to the budget process video. So. The intent there is to continue to bring the clarity and information forward about the full scope of our budget process. So that these types of documents don't live in silos. And that there could be greater context across the budget process when the public is viewing them.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcain. And for our last piece, I'll bring forward Assistant Superintendent Friend to talk about the new pilot schedule at Nishoba Regional High School.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. We are excited to share. That our high school will be, be piloting a new schedule beginning on October seventh. The piloting of a new schedule reflects our continued work to support and strengthen the student learning experience. As you are aware, we have implemented aligned schedules K to eight. Uh, the work at the high school level reflects the next phase of this work. It's big work. In a culmination of year-long efforts on the part of Dr. Boynton and the high school scheduling working group and team. Last year, the group met weekly during which time they explored scheduling options and sought faculty and student feedback about what was working and what was not working or could be improved. The result was a schedule for piloting this year and a goal of full implementation next year. The proposed new schedule is a seven day schedule that drops one period each day. Allowing for longer periods and uh time for deeper learning, less transitions for students and staff. And a new flex block period, two days during the week. The flex block period would serve two purposes. It would create space in the schedule for teacher collaboration and professional learning communities already underway in grades K through eight. And provide time for students to ask for and receive targeted support from teachers as part of our build out of M T S S at the high school level. After the pilot, Dr. Boynton will be surveying staff and students to get their feedback on this new schedule to inform next steps towards implementation.
Thank you, Ms. Friend. And Madam Chair, that concludes uh our report this evening.
Excellent. Uh, are there any questions about those last couple of items? Um, forgive me if I missed this. How long will the pilot? Um, what's the duration? How long will it go?
Three weeks.
Okay. All right. Well, we uh are excited to see how that goes. Great job with all of that experimenting and all the teamwork between the admin team and the teacher teams, staff teams. All right, guys, we're moving on. Uh, new business. Uh, without objection, I would like to move. Uh, the letter B to the top here and actually take on our Washington D C trip requests. So that some of our special guests um can have their business taken care of first. Seeing no objection, let's go ahead with that. And Kirk, maybe you can queue it up before I take a motion.
You bet. I would like to introduce Mr. Bates, Mr. Grady and Mr. O'Shea as our middle school principals. Uh, this is the annual request to. Uh, approve travel to Washington D C for our eighth graders. We're bringing this request to you tonight with. A motion to vote tonight uh because we have a financial hold that we can take advantage of. If we commit by September thirtieth. And so that's why we need your approval to do that tonight. Um, but this is our annual trip that we aligned with all of our eighth graders. You might have heard me mention earlier. Uh, that our, our three uh schools do this a little bit differently and part of that is. Uh, because uh of how we have traditionally experienced the D C trip in the past. But it also is very difficult to find a vendor that will work with us two hundred students large on this particular trip. So we do. Uh, go school by school with that. Uh, so without further ado, I would just like to turn it over to our principals and who's taking the lead on this one tonight, gentlemen?
Superintendent Downing, I think it's Mr. O'Shea's turn.
Okay, so Mr. O'Shea, we'll turn it over to you.
Um, yeah, it was great to hear that conversation about nature's classroom. I've been involved with that for, you know, fifteen, sixteen years. And seeing the growth students make when they travel is tremendous. And um. And so the opportunity to travel out of state to Washington, D C and something that is deeply connected to the eighth grade curriculum. Um, is a phenomenal opportunity for our, our, our students. And um, you, this has been running for quite a while um at, at Luther Burbank and, and uh took a pause during the pandemic. And then it's, it's wonderful to have it back. And uh, the last few trips have just been successful. And um, as I, I tell parents every year when the kids come back, they, they, and the parents just um have tremendous um. You know, feedback on how beneficial it is and um even, you know, uh, just as importantly. How we get feedback from docents and people in the museums about how wonderful the kids of Nishoba are. So it gives um, you know, uh, the opportunity to represent uh our schools and our communities outside of Lancaster. So. Um, you know, each of our, our um proposals are uh have before you for approval tonight.
And then uh, I would like to also bring Mr. Bates forward because Mr. Bates, there's something unique about Florence Sawyer School that's going on and uh can you? Because there's two requests in here for Florence Sawyer School. So can you bring some light to that?
Correct. Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Uh, what, what we are seeking at Florence Sawyer School is your approval and consideration. To pilot a trip in the fall of twenty twenty five of. Our current seventh graders would be eighth graders. So in effect, we would be planning for two trips uh concurrently. This, the spring trip for our current eighth graders. And uh, we'd like to pilot a fall trip for our current seventh graders who will be eighth graders in the fall. Um, we've, we've had some conversations about uh the, the possibilities that this type of trip. At this time of the year might offer and, and we'd like to explore that. Um. To say nothing of, of the opportunity to be there in a different season and um, and um. The potential availability of not as many schools being there at the same time. Um. But most importantly, to sort of set the stage for the work that our students do in the eighth grade around civics and, and understanding government and, and the role that they play in it and the role that government plays for us.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. And then finally, uh, Mr. Grady, if we can turn our attention to Stowe. Um, can you please review for the committee? We know there's a bit of a difference in terms of the ask for our families for, for Washington, D C. Can you bring some light into the role? Uh, of the, the style of trip that the, the students at Hale do relative to Mr. Cavini's expertise and the leadership that, that uh he provides there?
Certainly, um, thank you. So uh, it, it's a very similar trip that uh to the other schools with the exception of um. Uh, Mr. Cavini serves as our trip coordinator, being that um, you know, Mr. Cavini for several years uh a- after his um. I believe undergraduate worked for a company called Close Up and Close Up still to this day runs tours of Washington, uh, Washington, D C. For student groups across the country. Um, so really what Kevin does is works directly with the, with the uh, the, the bus company. Um, the, the different museums and locations that we're visiting to coordinate our arrival. Um, a- and, and a lot of what the students are seeing. And, and that entails also like ma- making in the moment decisions to. You know, forego a certain mon- monument at that time to go someplace else because there might be. Um, uh, you know, a, a road, a road closure or um, you know, so, so some similar event. Um, uh, so i- it's a, it's a diff- a little bit of a different role and um. Um, there's also some particular preferences for what, what hotels we, that we stay at. Um, it's been a little bit more restrictive uh in recent years because of the things that Principal Bates talked about. With there being so many student groups at that time of year. Um, so there are some minor differences in how the, how the um, uh, the trips are run. But generally speaking, what the experience is and what they see are, are, are similar across the three towns.
So as a result, um, Mr. Grady with Mr. Cavini leading essentially as our lead tour guide. Uh, for our students in Stowe, uh, we don't pay for those services through the service because Mr. Cavini is able to do that. And so uh, with that, Madam Chair, um, I'll turn it to you.
All right, everyone. So. Are there any um questions? Maybe I'll take some questions before we take a motion. Go ahead, Scott.
So you addressed most of my um. Concerns or questions regarding the trip. The one thing you did that I, that I noticed that was a little bit concerning to me was looks like. One of the trips was scheduled for Memorial Day week, the last week in May. And I know that it looks like one of the objectives of the trips is to like see Congress. And just like to point out that that week Congress is likely not to be in session. In previous years, they're not in session the week of Memorial Day. So. You know, just want to point out that, you know, they might not be there if that's one of the weeks of the trips.
Noted, it seems.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Um, Amy Cohen?
Uh, thank you. So I think the con, the um idea of doing a fall trip. And booking it this far in advance seems like it's. Um, allows families more time to plan for the expense um of the trip. And maybe help us lock in lower rates in addition to all the educational benefits. Is, is that? Have you found that that is true or?
Yeah, I, I don't.
Terms of the cost of the trip per student, I guess?
I, I think s- it, the cost will be similar to the spring uh um, that far out at, you know, it, I'm, I'm not, it's about the same cost. And I'm not sure. Sorry, I'm not sure there's much of a savings.
Okay, will it require families to commit to this trip of a year in advance or will that timeline? Remain the same in terms of putting deposits down and that kind of thing?
Ms. Cohen, we're asking for approval tonight just so we can begin those planning processes in earnest. Uh, and give us an opportunity to find a vendor. So this is simply to get the ball rolling on the planning cycle for that trip. So we're at the very genesis stage.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm putting the cart before the horse. Um, but I think it sounds like a great idea. Thank you for being proactive about it.
Any other questions? And so Amy, I'm gonna come back to you and ask you for a motion.
Okay, hang on for a second. Um.
Let's, let's take it. Uh, and it looks like Kirk wants two separate motions. So the first motion.
Yeah.
Is just for the current school year.
Yeah, for tracking purposes, I thought it'd be better to do a motion on this year's trip. Together in a bundle. And then we will isolate the Florence Sawyer trip for the fall of twenty five.
Okay. I move to approve the Florence Sawyer Hale Luther Burbank Middle School, Washington D trips. D C trips for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the roll. Joe?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That motion passes and Amy will take the second motion.
Okay, I move to approve the Florence Sawyer Washington D C trip for fall two thousand twenty five.
I'll also second that one. Any discussion on that? I will just quickly say that uh my, the high school that I work in is going in the fall this year. And I've already told Kirk that. So maybe he, you could even check in with the principal to see how. Or the superintendent to see how that, that went, but they are hoping for a good experience also.
Great.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, let's take the vote. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie? Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you to our middle, our, our middle school principals who are here. Joel, I know you're more than a middle school principal, but. Uh, our middle school principals, thanks, guys, for joining us and for um always being. Out ahead of the horse.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Bates, Mr. O'Shea, Mr. Grady for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, guys, moving on. Um, I would just like to say that there is an item in new business called Superintendent Goals Recommendations. Kirk, I think that was an oversight on my part because this presentation is going. This presentation was in the planning calendar for tonight. But we're going to have Kirk present his goals at the next meeting.
Yeah. That's correct.
Yep, so that's totally fine. Personnel. Yep, so that's totally fine. Personnel met with Kirk um on Monday night. And we hammered all of that out, and so it would have been just too quick of a turnaround for Kirk to build the presentation for tonight. Um, after we uh identified all of the indicators that he is gonna be focusing on based upon what the committee. Decided at the workshop. So at the next meeting, and I've already moved it on the planning calendar. At the next meeting, Kirk is gonna do a presentation on what his goal structure will look like. And at the meeting after that, we will vote to approve his goals, remembering that it is now a two-year cycle. So we do have a little bit more wiggle room on that timeline. Right, so that takes care of that agenda item. Let's go to what we've all been waiting for, and that is the school committee. Goals presentation. And uh what we have here is a spreadsheet in the meeting materials that tries to get the school committee to formulate smarty goals. That are um that hold us accountable for uh moving the strategic plan forward in our own right. And so if you guys could, or maybe Alita, you should, can I share my screen, Alita? Alright, so I'm gonna share my screen, which as you guys know, makes you almost invisible to me. So Amy, you have a question already?
I um, I just wanted to point out that it looks like the goal for the Communications Subcommittee was deleted. So I'm gonna, while we're talking, I'm gonna be typing in there and trying to recreate what was in there before.
Right on. Thank you for that.
Somehow disappeared.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, you know, you can go into the version history and maybe find it that way, or if you can just recreate it quickly, that's fine, too.
And Madam Chair, um, Ms. Masterson will make sure that once that update's there that we update the meeting materials. Because we should always make sure that what is presented publicly is in the record as well.
Yeah, and Alita, did you, did you post, you posted the Google Doc to the materials, so Kirk, it'll update automatically. Alright, so I am trying to share. Hang on, guys. I'm rustier than I should be. Okay. So what we'll um do is we're gonna present the goals tonight. I'm gonna ask um the chairpeople of each subcommittee to announce themselves. This is the big reveal. And then please share with the committee the goal that your subcommittee has come up with for the school committee. And then we will open it up to questions after each subcommittee chair is done explaining. So I hope that's clear enough for you guys. Uh, we're gonna start with budget and warrant.
So this is Scott Powell, and I was elected the chair of the Budget and Warrants Subcommittee. We discussed a couple of goals, um only one of which actually aligned with the strategic goals. And it's effectively what the same goal we worked with last year, so apologies to my fellow committee members if. I only included one of the two things we discussed on here, and it's maybe slightly different from what we discussed in the subcommittee. But again, the effectively the goal we we talked about was um um enabling the the district, the twenty-six district budget. And the activities um associated with that.
Alright. Great. Any questions on budget and warrant? And I cannot see your golden hands, so please feel free to just jump in. Hearing none. We're gonna move on to policy. Is that you, Amy?
She's trying to unmute.
She's very focused.
Yeah. Sorry, there you go. Um, yes, so I'm the chair um this year. Um, and our goal is uh I'll be working with Shondor and Jackie and Lindsay. And our goal is to um, it's pretty much the same as last year. Uh, to review and revise the policies, making sure that they're up to date. Um, and uh make sure that they're representative and align with our goals around diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Alright, any questions on the policy goal?
Do you want me just to change the date?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you have editing privileges, Jackie? I think you do. Gracias. Any other questions? Um, backing up just for a quick.
I have a question, actually.
Oh, go for it, Amy.
Sorry, my video is um, yeah, I'm just wondering um if. And maybe this will actually answer itself as we go further down, um, how policy works with Dear J. Whether that's.
Well, funny enough, our Dear J liaison is also excited to be on policy this year. So Jackie, you wanna speak to that?
Yes, um, so Dear J is working with all of the school committee, not any one specific sub. Committee. So when we get to the goals for. The ask for Dear J from us, if there are specific goals that you would want. Included, that certainly is a conversation that we could have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about policy? Alright, and also backing up really quick, Scott, you are the chair of Budget and Warrant. Can you recall who the secretary is? Who is that? Drumroll. Is it Shondor? It's Shondor. Okay, good. Nice. So Alita, I'm gonna do that for each one of these subcommittees to, so that you can add that. I think I didn't know the secretaries on all of them on the on the word document that you're gonna post to the web. That is the explanation of who's on what what committee and and the charge of each committee, so. We're gonna actually talk about that at the end. Uh, policy, we have Amy Vessels as the chair, and who's your secretary?
Uh, Jackie.
Excellent. Thank you, Jackie. Lindsay.
Yes, oh, good. I wasn't sure if you could see my hand. Um, I apologize. I just have one question. So previously, policy had Jackie, Shandor, Amy, and Jessie on it. I have absolutely no problem joining it, but I was just curious if maybe their placement for Jessie should be joining instead of me.
That is my error.
Only because I'm on, I'm on personnel and CPAC, but again, I would gladly join. I just didn't want to step on somebody else's toes.
No, no, no. Let me fix that. That is one hundred percent my error. It should say this.
Okay.
And vacancy.
Thank you.
Yes. So whoever is chosen at the select board tomorrow night in Bolton, they will be joining policy. Great. Thanks, Lindsay. Uh, alright guys, let's move on to communication. It looks like Amy was able to recreate that, so thanks for that, Amy. Go ahead, because Amy, are you the chair?
I am. Um, yeah, I was elected chair and Sharon is the secretary. Um, we met and came up with three goals. The Communication Subcommittee has kind of been reimagined this year because last year the work was. Mostly focused on the School Committee Manual, and there's just a few things left to tidy up with the School Committee Manual. So that did end up as one of our goals. Um, but the other two are kind of a new. Redefined focus for the Communication Subcommittee. The first one has to do with the Superintendent's Professional Practice Goal of forming the Student Advisory Council. So our goal would be to facilitate consistent communication with that council in accordance with policy JIB. Um, and I actually have that policy. I had it hyperlinked before, but it it is hyperlinked over under um key action steps, if anybody is curious about. Where that lives, it is, it is hyperlinked there. Um, the second goal is that we will explore opportunities for improving access to meeting materials and archived information. Um, from school committee meetings. And we have some pretty specific action steps listed over in column F about how we. Plan to go about that. Any, anything else I need to say?
I think that's good. Yeah, so this is probably the mo- the newest or like most unique goal. Any questions on this one or comments?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Uh, the advisory group that Dr. Boynton and I are forming uh is around um uh. Supporting and understanding students directly to the operational aspects of what's happening in the school system. Therefore, I'm a little bit cautious about connecting it to a Communication Subcommittee and specifically the School Committee. I understand the policy uh language in there, and we certainly can achieve that objective. But tying the two together, um, I don't think would be a a prudent uh way to achieve those objectives. Because I wanna make sure that we're keeping that advisory group uh to the superintendent principal in a. Pristine and what may be necessary confidential space.
Yeah, so we had some conversation about this at the workshop, and and I don't think we ever came to a complete conclusion over. Which student body will satisfy this requirement of JIB? So in the past, we have um collaborated with the STUCO, the Student Council.
Yes, and that's where the Student Council Representatives are elected from. And that is uh what's specifically cited in that, in the the, in the MGL around. Student selection of their classmates. So that's the body that makes more sense uh connected to the school.
Yeah, so just pulling up the policy, just so, just to make sure that everybody is completely clear for what we're talking about here. Um, this so-called Student Advisory Committee, uh. You know, that the Nishoba High School calls it the Student Council. Hudson High School calls it the Community Council. Like, it it can be different at every school, but.
Right.
There is a requirement in Mass General Law that's the school committee has um a kind of consistent. As well, it says here that students will be welcomed into the committee, but that also the committee will then go out to the school. It says once every other month to meet with the Student Advisory Committee, whatever that is in your particular school. It says that it has to be at least five students elected by the high school body. And so in the past, just to make it easier, we met with, you know, whoever was available from the STUCO. And so Kirk, is this something that, you know, I mean, we can change the language in the goal here.
Yeah, we could certainly work that out. And when I sit down with Dr. Boynton uh the week after next to do that planning, we'll incorporate that uh into it. And then I'll update Ms. Cohen.
Yeah, so like this is kind of um up for debate still. It's not going to be that one council that you had that is serving a very specific operational purpose, but.
Yes.
You will tell us which student body you want communication to kind of interface with.
Yeah, the Student Council does serve as that Student Advisory Committee to the School Committee with the elected representatives being the two. High school students that you saw tonight. Um, so it's a matter of coordinating what uh some communication moments can be uh with that body. So uh I'll work with both Dr. Boynton and our advisor this year on that.
Awesome. I think that that might have just been a little misunderstanding about what what we were tasked to do. Um, you know, as a subcommittee, and so we will definitely work with the superintendent to. You know, fine tune that within what, you know, what his his plan was.
Yeah, that's quite right, quite right. Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
And I think, Amy, too, that when I think of this, just trying to give you guys a little bit of feedback. I think that because this has not been a practice, you got, like, your goal is ultimately to craft. A practice, right, to find out how to make JIB operational? And so your goal is not only to do the communication, but to set up the construct. Through which this communication can happen in a sustainable way?
I think that's what we were, we were getting at, is that.
Okay.
We're just trying to figure out how we interact with. Whatever committee this policy is referring to, because that structure doesn't. We weren't sure that that. Structure already existed. I know we have student liaisons to the school committee, and I guess. Um, I'm wasn't sure that those two things were the same.
So would you mind, would anybody object if um, if I put that the committee will construct? And facilitate? Or?
We kind of, in the action steps, we talk about creating a structure. Um, it's, so I think it's in there, it's just not captured in the. And this is partly because I had to retype things. Like, I had, I had put more thought into the wording of this, um, but it got deleted. So.
Does that make sense? So just, I just added, the committee will create a structure to facilitate consistent communication with the Student Council likely. In accordance with policy GIB.
I'm okay with that.
Guys, any other questions? Yeah. Any other questions about? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to check in with um. I'm curious to hear what others think, especially others on the C- Communication Subcommittee. I don't want to speak for them.
Anyone? Oh, it looks like they're okay. Alright, everybody, moving on to personnel. Uh. Sharon.
So that is me. Um, I will chair the Personnel Committee this year, and Lindsay is Secretary. Um, our goal again is very similar to um previous year's goal. It focuses again on uh the student or the superintendent rather evaluation process. And with the, with the goal being that at the end of two years now, we'll have the full participata- participation. From the committee in um the evaluation process.
Alright, any questions on? No, that looks good. Any other questions? Alright, and then over to Dear J, and you guys might notice that. Dear J is written more like a goal for Dear J and less like a goal for the School Committee. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, which is totally fine by me. But um I just wanted to point that out, that that makes this one a little bit different. And um if the committee wants to keep it that way, that's again, totally fine by me. Uh, or if you would rather it be revised to be more of a goal for us. I'm, I'm fine either way. So Jackie, I'm gonna let you describe the work that you guys have done, because it looks like a lot of work here that's pretty awesome. And then we can open it up for discussion.
So the way that I was thinking about it was, what are the things that we talked about in the workshop? And then what are the? What's the spirit of the? Goals that Dear J had supported um in the School Committee last year? So that was specifically around providing feedback um for the Equity Audit. And then also supporting us in developing a DEIB statement that the School Committee. Could uh adhere to. So these goals look a little bit different because the ask is. These are the things that we are looking for, and I I'm happy to revise this, however, we would like. Um, what I, what I am trying to replicate is more consistency. Um, in how Dear J is sharing feedback with us and we're asking for. And then having specific dates and deliverables around things that we're really looking for. Um, so there's some specific things that we are hoping. Based on the conversations that we had last year at the workshop this summer. And then in some early um discussions this year. So they have not met as a group that's happening on on October first. And really, that's, the hope is that if we decide that these are the, the deliverables or the activities that we want them to focus on. Then at that onboarding and first meeting that they'll, they'll review these and basically determine whether or not that. This can be met. So for me, the, the key takeaways are providing additional feedback and maybe some more space around. Uh, hearing what they had to say um in response to the Equity Audit as being something early on. They also have a really phenomenal guiding document that uh has been cultivated over the course of many years. And so part of what we're asking them to do is look at how that guiding document currently exists. And then realign it with current policy so that we're making sure that we're identifying um potential. Candidates for the Advisory Board at specific timelines. Um, and that there are other key activities for them to be able to do. Um, for me, the big one is finalizing a decision-making tool. That all subcommittees can utilize, and then hopefully pilot that um starting in December or January. So that we can give active feedback. So that we can give active feedback about how is that working for us? Is this a tool that's sustainable for the school district and the school committee?
Thanks so much for that, Jackie. Um, does anybody have a question or a comment? Anything you would like altered? Jackie, I wonder if you could add a sentence at the beginning. That basically just like forces it into the school committee's realm. Where you would say something like the school committee commits itself to um utilizing. This advisory as stated. Do you know what I mean?
Can you say that first where the school committee is?
Commits itself, I think I said. Um. You know what I mean? Just so that when we're listing our goals, we're basically saying our goal is to properly utilize this advisory. Filled with really awesome people doing great work. And the utilization will be as listed.
Yep. Alright, I had to think about and.
Yeah, and you can you can do it in whatever way you want. I just want to kind of pivot it toward us. Cause these as listed, these are their goals, which we that was our task to identify to give them a charge. And now we want to make sure that we are committing ourself to that charge as well.
Yes, I think that where I would wanna re like state that at the beginning of this goal, but then also in terms of. That ask to the school committee is that. If we're asking them to give us specific tools that we are then open to utilizing them and that that is a goal for the school committee.
Correct. Yes. Is everybody okay with that? Everybody's looking good about that. Okay, Amy, question? I can see you thinking. Are you unmuted? Trying. She's trying.
Okay, there we go. Uh, so frustrating on the phone. Um. I my, I guess my only comment is this this seems um very ambitious.
Well, um, I will say, yeah. There are parts of this that it that have been worked on for many years and I think. It specifically the decision-making tool that there has been a tremendous amount of work poured into that. And I think it's just. Coming to a place where we're saying, okay, let's try this and it may not be the best tool. And we're trying it to see how it feels and to make a commitment to utilizing it on a regular basis in real time.
And that's listed like as the. I see it now. Okay.
Alright. Alright, guys. Um, so I am noticing that that. Oh, excuse me. So obviously negotiations is um not applicable at this moment in time. I'm seeing Sharon's hand. Let me back up. Go ahead, Sharon.
I can wait. I didn't see that there was um two more lines on your chart.
Okay, um, so negotiations is not um. Necessary at this point in time. If it does become necessary, we'll take that on, but there's gonna be no stated goal. Uh, audit advisory though. Scott, what's going on here?
I copied last year's call. It made a lot of sense.
Excellent. And let's see. Awesome. Any questions about the audit advisory? Alright, guys. Um, so it looks like there are no other questions or comments. Uh, give it some thought. Oh, Sharon.
I just um. I had one other goal that I had been thinking about. We talked about it a little bit at um. Personnel the other night. Uh, it it was kind of a. It's hard to know where to classify or where where to put it, uh which which group it might belong to. And so I was just wanted to throw it out there for um. For thought and maybe it's not something for this time. Maybe it's something to think about for the future. Um, or maybe it is something that we wanna think about this time. Um, but the the goal that I'm thinking about is. To address the question about um. Committing ourselves to operating in a way that is consistent with what we expect from our school leaders. Our teachers, our staff, our students as it relates to equitable practice. To um emotional intelligence, which is commonly referred to as social emotional learning. Um, communication among ourselves with the administration and with the community. And and um fostering a shared Nishoba culture. Um. And I guess what I'm thinking about is we have. A team that works very well together. And what can we, is there a way that we can um? Share our strengths and use our strengths to commit. Or or create a way for, help me out, Leah.
Well, I think what you were saying at Personnel the other night is you like what we have going on right now. You don't want it to go away if members leave. Uh, so like, is there a way that we could kind of codify our operational behavior? And root it in the equity audits recommendations. That which we are asking our staff to exemplify. How could we fleece our own behaviors, protocols, practices? With these same kinds of expectations.
And let me let me add in there. I think I misspoke the other night when I said. Spoke about it not going away as much as I was thinking about. How can we use what we've learned as a committee now about? How to work really effectively together to pass on at um to. This committee as it reinvents itself on a regular basis. Um, that these are some things that we've learned a way that work along the way that work really well. Um, it's kind of like institutional knowledge um that work really well. And maybe that will be helpful in the future and maybe they'll find some other things to add or change or update as personalities change. And as we move forward. Um. So just something to throw out there, I guess.
Alright, so let me um see what Amy thinks. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, but go ahead.
Yeah, I I like the idea of an um almost like an overarching goal for the school committee. Um, I think that's what Sharon's getting at, but I also think that what she's referring to, we try to capture in our protocols. That we develop and so maybe all we need to say is that we. You know, one of our goals is to conduct business and in in um accordance with the protocols. We have all, like we have pledged to. Um. What you were saying Sharon and Leah was much much more eloquent than what I'm trying to say, but the point of it was that we have protocols in place. That kind of we've al- already agreed to operate by, but they're not really captured in any of this.
Yeah, and I think what Sharon and I were and Lindsay was at Personnel with us as well, what the three of us were kind of bantering about. I mean, Lindsay is obviously new, so we were trying to like bring her up to speed about the history of this committee, et cetera. And I think what we said was maybe what the protocols need is a preface. That almost provides like some sort of historical context. And um because there is no introductory paragraph really of any substance. And so maybe Personnel, because we have this two-year cycle for the superintendent now, like Personnel was feeling like we don't have anything to do. You guys could maybe task Personnel with looking at the protocols to perhaps build some sort of preface. That will get at what Sharon is looking to do, provide future school committees with a little bit more. Institutional knowledge so that none of that gets lost. Uh, so let me go to Kirk.
I should have lowered my hand. Uh, Ms. Cohen stole my thunder. Darn you, Ms. Cohen. Um, but I think that's exactly what we're talking about here is the sectors of the committee. And your subcommittee goals to those sectors. So what Ms. Pock is talking about is overarching. Definitely belongs in the protocols is that's the norms of engagement for this group. And so. That makes good sense.
So guys, I don't know that we want, we need to make it an official goal, but can I get a thumbs up if you guys are all okay with expanding the charge? Of the Personnel Subcommittee to explore this idea a little bit? I see one thumbs up, couple thumbs up. Everybody okay with that? Joe, you all right with it? Shandor, you okay with it? He's like, sure, have at it. Um, alright, guys, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So you would explore the idea of developing language for an overarching goal that would tie into the protocols because.
No, we would explore the um possibility of putting a preface in front of the protocols. And you guys don't have to vote for it.
Okay, but then I don't think you're necessarily getting to the crux of what Sharon was talking about, which is.
Well, Sharon doesn't necessarily need it to be a goal per se, and it's not like every single thing we do needs to be. Um, codified as a goal, but I think she wants to start toying with this idea and Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong. Of like how to find a home for this idea she has. Sharon, does it feel okay for you?
That's fine for me, yeah. Um. I I guess what I'm thinking about is we've had some challenges in the past as a district. And we figured out how to move in a positive way. So that we're in we're in a much different place now. This this district has taken off in the last few years. What I what I'd like to do or what I'm thinking about is what can we? How can we use what we've learned from facing the challenges that we've had? And how can we? Pass that. Learning along to this committee as it reinvents itself as it goes on. So that if a similar challenge were to come up in the future. Or when another challenge comes up in the future, there's something. To rely or you know, it's not like reinventing how how do we deal with this? It's, oh, we face, we've had something like this before. Um, this is some tools, some strategies, this is what we know, whatever. Um, and. So you've got a. Springboard maybe to start from. I don't know if that's making sense. I know I can be a little bit like.
Well, it's kind of up in, I think that it could land in a bunch of committees places, but because it's kind of Sharon's brainchild. Personnel was willing to just put it on our next agenda and talk about it. And then we might decide like, you know, this is something that belongs here or there. Um, and we can re-task it later, but is everybody just okay with us moving it to Personnel, the first Personnel agenda? It's feel, it felt like I had all the thumbs. Uh, Jackie, final comment? You're good, where'd Jackie go?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good. Okay, sorry, you jumped.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks. Alright, my friends. So we will vote on this spreadsheet the next that next time we're together. It seems like the ones that are up there are going to be the formal goals for the year. Um, that's that. So moving on the agenda, uh, the next topic is finance and operations, but the only thing um Ross had to share was the grant information. I'm pretty sure and that was all in the consent agenda. And we have no unfinished business because we're that good. I wonder if there are any subcommittee or advisory reports beyond the goal stuff that anybody would like to share. Seeing none. Uh, thank you, everybody, for that. Items on the next agenda, you guys can check out the planning calendar, but is if there, I'm actually, let me share my screen really quick. I'm less rusty right now. So you guys can see that this is what's going on for the October ninth agenda. Think I have it all right? Any questions or comments? Just yell it out because I can't see you guys.
Do we need the budget timeline at the next meeting? It was shared with us at this meeting.
Kirk?
No, we don't. And I was gonna say also where you see the equity audit, strategic plan, superintendent goals. That's all gonna be wrapped together. And we'll flush that out in our planning session, Madam Chair.
Very good. So I can delete this. Yeah, Kirk?
Please, yes. Thank you.
Alright.
Uh, we we moved it up.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Amy.
Yeah, I was just wondering if during the school choice update, we could. Um, also, if the update could include how many spots were filled um from this year. And what the process of applying for school choice looks like for students.
That's already done.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, guys? Alright, so if there is no more uh business from the committee, I am going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Scott, good job. Let's take the roll. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself. Yes, Scott?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
It was not a record breaker, guys, but it was pretty darn good.
Hey, you you missed me, but I'm a yes.
Oh, Shandor, you have to stay. You have to stay, sorry. Shandor votes yes. I'm sure he does. Thank you, everybody.